Good evening. I'm Council Vice President Davita Russell. President Kuda is on vacation. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole, February 18, 2026. This meeting is now, I mean, 2025. Thank you. I'm going a whole year, right? Uh, 2025, uh, 6:30 PM. Roll call, Addie.
Cobb.
Here.
Kuda. Petrus.
Here.
Well, Kuda's on Zoom, not present. Larson.
Here.
Maddox.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Ash.
Here.
Thank you. We're now, for our agenda is legislative review. Ordinance, first reading for ordinance 24. This is council's recess to council July 7th and July 21st. Any questions? Seeing none, moving on. All right, next one is Resolution 25. This is to execute a agreement, having the mayor execute an agreement with TAC Computer, Inc., Ohio Incident Base Reporting System for interfacing in e-parking citation software. Any questions? Chair recognizes Councilman Posh.
We have a contract for this other than, other than the legislation. When I looked yesterday, I didn't see it.
Give me one second, see if I can find it. Don't believe I got it, but we'll see. I know this is a renewal of a contract, so we have one, but just not sure. I did not receive one of the documents I have.
Is it possible to have it sent to council?
I'd really love a little bit more information on it. I mean, is this something that should go to the, the Safety Committee as a matter of practice? It looks like it needs to be approved on an emergency measure. Is there a reason why I can't wait till the next meeting?
I believe the con, the previous contract already expired, so that's why it's on emergency.
Would you like for this to be referred to your committee?
Well, I'd like to know about the impact if you don't vote on it tonight.
It is up for adoption.
Well, if we don't vote on it tonight, it doesn't go through.
Correct.
But what's, what's the cities, what's the ramification from the city?
Uh, I don't see the law director, or I don't know if the mayor's willing to answer that question.
Maybe someone find out before we, if we vote on it and discuss it.
So for future reference, um, I think that this is the kind of question that it would be useful to provide in advance so that we can have, say, the police chief or a service's captain, or somebody here to provide specific departmental answers to the questions. The law director can provide you with a contract that you should have, uh, in the system. But the law director can provide whatever you want. Contact information, you know, pushing it to, um, uh, tech computer.
Okay.
Contract, they like to make the ramifications, but then some of the ramifications are, but we will not really proceed. So connecting our computers with the, the tech, uh, database, um, or e-parking citations, so on and so forth, if you don't pass this, they'd like the contract that the mayor would not send to the clerk.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Um, ramifications of not approving is, is what you're indicating. I think I walked in.
Councilman Posh asked that ques, asked the question.
Okay. Um, I can try to dig that contract up now and forward it to council. Not sure what happened there. Why?
Your preference, Councilman.
I mean, isn't it a normal procedure to have a memo or something that goes along with this? There's nothing else to just, well, there's the check files.
So renew.
You know, it doesn't indicate any ramifications.
Yeah, and as the memo, as the memo does indicate, although it's not working in narrative form, um, it is a renewal of these services that are being provided. Um, and the city's been working with this under for a period of time.
Hell, do you happen to know when was the last time we renewed it so I can pull up the legislation quickly?
I think it's typically been, um, like in the neighborhood of $25,000. Um, and so it's coming to council maybe for the first time, um, because it's a multi-year agreement. I'm just asking for more information on what it is. I mean, it's, it gets sent to us. It doesn't seem like that there's enough narrative or enough information that even a layperson could really understand what it's about. I mean, if it's something that, you know, I have someone's word that it's important, you know, I'll vote for it. But, you know, I think as a matter of practice, I mean, I think we need to make sure that if something like this is going to be presented, we need to have a little bit more information.
Uh, Mayor.
Right, so, uh, as the memo states, um, if you want to, the narrative in the memo, sort of provides insight into what the software is used to. So in each of our police interceptors, we've got these, um, you know, probably get the nomenclature a bit wrong, but, uh, these mobile data terminals or, or, um, you know, computers basically within cars that are used to access a particular system. That system that we use currently is the Tac Computer, um, system. And, uh, this is a system that we use to ensure that when we are putting in these traffic citations, parking citations, so on and so forth, um, the record-keeping software that, that these things flow into is through Tac. Everything that we do through these mobile data terminals, um, you know, feeds into that records management software. It's ultimately what it is. It's, uh, a police records management software system that we have been using for years and years and years, um, with a bit of a break as we were working through, a potential alternative through CBD, uh, Chagrin Valley Dispatch. But based on the, uh, functionality of the Chagrin Valley Dispatch, um, software, we chose to go back to Tac because it was more useful for police in the execution of their duties. So this is a continuation and an expansion in terms of the timeframe for our contract with Tac for this proprietary police records management software that we use to manage all of the records that we, um, create as we are issuing citations for parking or, uh, traffic violations and that sort of thing. So this is where we provide records, um, for, in, in response to public hearing requests for this sort of police reports and, and citation, um, activity that we perform as a municipal government. This is where that information is stored. It has connections to our, uh, EDC system so that that information can be stored, uh, in that way. This is a renewal of ongoing service with Tac.
Chair recognizes Councilman Posh, I mean, Petrus.
Thank you. I think that I heard that the contract expired. Do we, can we learn when it expired and get confirmation that they're still providing service to us?
Director.
If you look at the police chief on that.
Okay, so, uh, if you guys really, really want to, um, I can see if somebody from police is available. Maybe we can have somebody come to your meeting to provide a little bit more, um, information about this. But again, if, if you got a question like this, it would be helpful to provide that in advance.
It expired December 31st, 2024. It expired December 31st of 2024.
Okay.
Um, I imagine that right now we are being given some leeway, um, because I haven't heard alarm bells screaming out from the police admin.
So is there a possibility, uh, law director, that council can get the contract agreements so they can go over it and?
You, you know, I, you know, I'm not going to hold this up.
I'm.
So, I mean, we're, we're here, you know, discussing these kinds of things. I just thought that there'd be a little bit more meat on the bone to get, having a little bit more information about this. I'm a little bit disturbed that it already expired and here we are, you know, halfway through February. And in a memo, and we're just finding out about this in this meeting, and this memo from the chief is, you know, from the, the end of January. You know, I, you know, I'm going to support the chief. I'm going to support our police efforts. But, you know, I do think that we need to get information on a little bit more timely basis. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Move on to, um, Resolution 26. Uh, this is the appointment of reappointing three, um, members to the Citizens Advisory Committee. Uh, Councilman, uh, Cobb, do you have anything to say on this?
Uh, I don't. Uh, we've briefly discussed this at the last meeting. And I, I, I didn't hear any objections. So, uh, this came out of my committee and, and, uh, we had, uh, these people are all currently serving and as far as, I know there haven't been any issues or problems with them, so we're simply reappointing them.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, discussions? The chair recognizes the mayor.
So I'm, I'm curious about, uh, maybe, did any council or, or council committee have conversations with the individuals who sought reappointment?
Councilman Cobb.
We did not. I rely on either the, uh, chair or, uh, Mr. Iorio to let me know if there are any problems or issues within of them or their attendance at the meetings. And if I don't hear anything consistent with our past practices, we reappoint people.
Did anybody supply, uh, an application for reappointment to council?
Uh, no.
Were there any other applications for, for you to this body?
There are, and there were some vacancies and they are yet to be filled.
Has anybody had, uh, any opportunity to speak with the CAC about plans for the future, any adjustments in how they do their work? Anything related to how the CAC, CAC makes such recommendations?
Uh, we had an Administrative Services Committee meeting last year where that chairperson came in and shared with us, uh, how things were going and any issues or concerns. And that chair, along with all the others that were in attendance, were advised that they had any issues or problems, that they should reach out to council.
Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome. All right. Seeing no more other questions, we will move on to ordinance 23, and this is the salary schedule. Any questions? All right, oh. Chair recognizes Councilman Posh.
So this is a first reading?
Yes.
I have a concern about.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Oh, is that, I didn't know.
No, I, I recognize, the chair recognizes Councilman Posh.
Looking at each other.
We got the floor, sir.
Thank you. One of the things I discussed with the law director was, except before we received this legislation, was, um, legislation to adjust the mayor's salary, uh, to increase the mayor's salary to something in the neighborhood of, you know, I'm, I'm using round numbers, about 120, 130,000. And then have a step increase if, uh, the mayor held, uh, an advanced degree, in the area of operations, in the area of, uh, public service, in the area of law. Can increase, can increase, it's sort of like what we see in school districts where, um, our superintendent who comes in has a certain higher salary if they have, uh, an advanced degree, with the hopes that we would be attracting, uh, future mayors that have those kind of qualifications. I'd like to have an opportunity to discuss that with council.
I'm actually going to refer to, uh, the Administrative Service Committee.
Okay.
Question?
Yeah.
Uh, the chair recognizes Councilman Maddox.
Thank you. Just, just as a general statement, I, I look forward to that, that discussion specifically. Um, I, I'm not in agreement with, with that. One of the discussions I've had just broadly in HR circles is the ability to, uh, create discriminatory environments for people based on those backgrounds while overlooking other pieces of their experience or other degrees that they have or certifications. And so this is something that in the past has been problematic and caused, uh, us not to have the, the amount of diverse candidates that we would like in positions. And I, I think that would be a dangerous road to go down, um, for our, our community. We probably carve some people out, um, of that process just based on that. Uh, I, I think that there are other life experiences, other certifications, other things that they bring to the table. I think that should be considered if you're going to do something like that. And so I, I would definitely look forward to that conversation. But, but for, just for me, that's, that's not something that I think should be tied to any specific type of degree, based on council's, um, feelings or opinions. But this drive touches a broad spectrum of, of, of things and people and circumstances. And I think we should take a look at that in a broad way. And so anything that limits or it seems punitive based on what someone decided to do or not do, I, I think would be problematic for any future leaders of, of the city, not just, uh, for the mayor, but for anyone else. So that's something I look forward to discussing. It's just something we're having a broad conversation with, um, across leaders, uh, not just in a county, but across the country in terms of how that is utilized to break out or, uh, cause people of color to not be able to break into some of those positions that normally they would have just based on some of those degrees that maybe they are lacking. So I look forward to having that conversation. I just want to share that.
Any other discussions or questions? Uh, chair recognizes Councilman Petrus.
Uh, during the, the presentation, the overview of the results of the survey, I asked if it would be possible for us to get a list of the positions that would be adjusted. Looking through the documents that were shared with us, I don't see that. So if it's possible, it would be, it would be helpful to receive that. You know, I, at least speaking for myself, I don't need names attached to the positions, but just knowing which positions would be affected by the, the adjustments would be.
I'm sorry, co, the chair recognizes Councilman Cobb.
And I think there was also a request when Archer was in last week that we, he provided all the additional reports that, uh, they provided the city. So where they got their, uh, salary, uh, schedules and surveys from. So we could see what other municipalities reported and where they drew that information.
Thank you. The chair recognizes the mayor.
I understand. I can, I can be corrected. Uh, if I'm wrong, uh, council clerk has direct contact info for Jim by the guy there, so please feel free to request and receive that information.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. I see it now. Yeah, I, uh, President Kuda?
Yeah, thank you. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. So in section 13, it talks about the hospitalization and the council has to sign off and so forth. I didn't realize, and obviously until I read this, that that was part of it. What I want to know is when, when the, I guess two questions. When is council involved in this part about the hospitalization? Again, that's part of the language in section 13. And is the 12% that the employees pay in, um, is that, you know, kind of standard practice with other municipalities? How does that, I guess I want to know how that measures up with, you know, our neighbors and like in similar cities? And also, um, it doesn't really get into the details of the hospitalization plan. Um, it just says that our residents have it, but it doesn't, it doesn't get into like what's covered and who's covered and that kind of information. So I don't know if there's anybody that could speak to the details of what's involved here.
The chair recognizes, uh, City Administrator.
The 12 and a half percent's about average. I mean, some communities are a little bit higher. Um, superintendents and, and school districts sometimes do pickups and things like that. The hospitalization is a plan that is negotiated and bid out through, um, law director can help me here. Whoever provides, uh, and that, that's part of your employee handbook and that package of, I think there's A, B, and C, if I'm not, I think there's A, B, and C. And you get a chance to choose based on, you know, what that is. I want this coverage. I want this deductible. I don't want any coverage because my wife has it or my partner has it or his vice side. So it's kind of, it's not uncomplicated on that ever, but it's obviously negotiated with the, whoever wins the bid. Uh, and then they, they bid on a package, like we'll do this, this, and this. And it's, like I said, it's part of the employee handbook of, of what you sign up when you become an employee. Here's your coverage. But that 12 and a half percent is, you know, uh, there's some things floating in Columbus about public safety being upped on that percentage, which is definitely going to be a financial impact at some particular point when they do that. Some of it is bargaining unit, with a kind of a couple of different, maybe that, maybe that just more confused you on that side of it, but, um, tried to explain it the best I know and the best I could.
Yeah, and, and sorry, I said section 13. I meant section 14. I just, it just didn't, it just wasn't very specific.
And that might be intentional.
Okay.
Because of the plan, the plans, they do change, and I'm not sure what the contract is. Bill is it three years, probably, five?
I, you know, I think we probably need HR here for that.
Okay, I'm just not sure how long the, go ahead.
The, the chair recognizes the mayor.
Thank you. I just wanted to make something clear to the council. The ordinance that is in front of you does not change anything with the exception of the salaries for permanent full and part-time employees for the unisipally elected positions at a future date. And the form of the, uh, the salary schedule, which is now, uh, switched to match the recommendations from Archer Companies. The additional information that is in the wage and salary ordinance remains unchanged. All information related to sick time, um, so on and so forth, are unchanged from the previous wage and salary ordinance. The changes that were made were to the permanent full and part-time wage and salary schedules and classifications, and that is all.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other questions? All right, I'm going to refer, um, ordinance 23 to the Administrative Service Committee. And, uh, any documents that you may need to go over, uh, the salary schedule? Councilman, um, Cobb, if you could let Addie know and she could send it to you.
Okay, I'll do that.
Thank you. Next ordinance is ordinance, uh, 27. This is resurfacing, huh, Euclid Avenue Boulevard. Any questions on that? Euclid Heights Boulevard. Euclid Heights Boulevard.
I'm sorry, I get excited about Euclid Boulevard.
Oh, Euclid Heights Boulevard. Euclid Heights Boulevard.
You said Euclid, Euclid needs to teach.
It's a whole lot of streets. Saying, yes, uh, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Larson.
Uh, just a clarification. I had asked, um, Kevin Brown via Brian Anderson about the requirements that OFA has for engaging with the project's neighbors. And Kevin came back to me. He said that no, OFA does not have any particular requirements for community engagement.
It's so different.
Oh, okay.
I heard Euclid Heights Boulevard.
I'm sorry. Must be in another meeting, sorry.
Okay, we're all good here?
That's the next one.
Okay. So, uh, ordinance, second readings. Uh, ordinance 21, this is the purchase agreement for Laker Shop. Uh, we're going to talk about this in executive session. So if there's any questions, we can talk about that in the second session. You need more questions now? Feel free. Uh, the chair recognizes, uh, Councilman Cobb.
Are we going to, uh, would you like me to make a motion at this?
Not yet.
Okay, all right.
Okay, thank you. Second reading, ordinance 22. This is an ordinance, uh, for the mayor, authorizing the mayor to take all actions necessary for the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council 2025 for a community grant. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance 10, second reading. And this is what we had our public hearing on. This is regarding zoning, pardon, 11 of the cottonified ordinance. Any questions? Seeing none, uh, with the consent agenda, if there's anything needs to be removed, I'm sorry. Uh, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Larson.
Thank you, President Russell. We talked about ordinance 11, 2025, and the mayor has asked to have that as an amendment to the agenda tonight. So I would expect him to do that. Wouldn't that happen at the beginning of the council meeting where we ask to amend?
If you amend, I'm sorry.
So, um, I was not, uh, thinking about amending the agenda because things were, came after the deadline and so late. So, uh, I would request, um, the, a vote of council to make that amendment. Councilman, I mean, I'm sorry, uh, chair recognizes the mayor.
So it would require council to vote to amend the agenda on the floor.
Correct.
As, as would be expected.
You got a spot for that.
Yes.
It was, it was my expectation that there would be given second reading and then we would move forward with a, an amendment by substitution. Obviously, there was a miscommunication about, um, sort of what would appear on the agenda. But it is my understanding that the optimal way to amend a piece of legislation that is before council is to, in a council meeting, amend the legislation.
Correct.
Um, and, and so that, that's what I anticipated would happen. And so that's what my, my request is for council to amend the agenda at the beginning of the meeting to add 11, 2025 to the agenda, um, under second reading with no expectation of passage. And then once we are in that section, um, I would ask, and, and I've spoken with the finance chair about this, as for amendment, a substitution to be made, I'll be providing that to Councilor Larson to make that amendment so that we can then move forward, refer back to Councilor Larson's committee for additional discussion of the complete package.
Correct. I, I understand exactly that. Uh, and I know that has to be voted on in council chambers, but I wanted to make sure that the council members here understood that before we went out there. But is there any discussions? Because I don't have, um, ordinance 11.
And I had a question along those lines.
Yes.
As I understand it, this is an amendment by substitution of the exhibit and not the legislation itself, correct? Do you want to change this to the?
Any council members have that exhibit?
Uh, Councilor Larson will, and the rest of council will as well at the start of the meeting.
I'm sorry.
Councilor Larson will have it to make the amendment, and the rest of council will have it as well at the beginning of the meeting. All of the amendments have already been discussed or at least provided to council and are publicly available on the outside as well.
Is there any discussion regarding, um, uh, the amendment that the mayor is asking for at council meeting? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Larson.
Thank you. Mayor, sir, and I'd like to clarify that the exhibit will be the revised capital budget request list with the increase.
It will be the, yes, the revised cap, with the $10,000 additional in, uh, community services. But the exhibit won't be that list. It will be exhibit one, um, for the appropriations amendments. as adjusted by the capital increase that is reflected in the list of capital requests that has been submitted to council and provided publicly on the website.
Any discussion on the amendment that the mayor is asking for at the council meeting? The Chair recognizes Councilman Pash.
I just need to make, you know, we have not seen this. We've seen what the total numbers are in a different form. I need some time to process this. You know, whether we, I mean, it's got to get referred back to the Finance Committee so we can look at it. If we're adding it in, that's fine, but, I mean, we're still not at a place where, you know, I think we can make a decision on this.
So if you're not at a place to try to make a decision, is it necessary to read it into second reading and/or to take it back to committee first? Question, Law Director?
I think that's council's pleasure. I think the sponsor has indicated how he thinks it's best handled, and I don't have any objection to that. A committee can't effectuate an amendment, but it can recommend an amendment to the full council. But it can't actually occur in committee.
Okay. Any, hold on one second, Mayor. Any other questions here? The Chair recognizes the mayor. I'll get with you, Ms. Larson.
So as I stated in the last meeting where this was discussed, there are two options here. Obviously, council can choose to punt this if they want to. I think that it makes the most sense from a time efficiency standpoint to make the amendment tonight so that it can be discussed as a complete package in the next Finance Committee meeting. If council chooses that it doesn't want to do that, I can certainly withdraw the legislation in the interest.
Any questions or discussion? Councilwoman Larson.
I'm asking for clarification from Mayor Serran. So what we have before us is ordinance eleven, twenty twenty-five. It's already been first read. It's been read into the record first time. I was thinking, expecting that we'd be reading it in for the second time if we amend the agenda tonight. And I thought you would be attaching the exhibit of what you have told us you posted on the website, the revised capital request list that includes the increase of $10,000. Is, am I, am I missing something?
I'm not entirely sure, but the best way that I can explain it is that ordinance eleven, twenty twenty-five is an ordinance with a single exhibit. That single exhibit shows the appropriations for each fund, departments within those funds, and the objects within those departments. The initial exhibit that was introduced does not include the additional nine or so million dollars of capital that has been discussed, is in the process of being discussed, and has been provided both publicly to the residents of Cleveland Heights and to council. It is currently online on the twenty twenty-five budget information webpage. That is not an amendment to the appropriations ordinance. The exhibit to the appropriations ordinance is a list of funds, departments, and objects. It is the sort of the standard way of doing appropriations ordinance that show the capital request that you have seen in vastly more detail in a more simplified form for the purposes of an appropriations ordinance. The substitute exhibit is not the spreadsheet that shows each individual project, but instead is an updated Exhibit One that includes the additional capital requests on top of the 4.4 million that are already in the appropriations ordinance, reflecting that new exhibit which would allow for the appropriation of the additional capital dollars in twenty twenty-five.
Have we seen that new exhibit?
You have not seen the new exhibit. You have seen all of the information and all of the capital requests that show up in the exhibit. So I'll be providing that to you shortly. Just wanted to make sure that what I'm providing to you is absolutely without point before you introduce me. I'm doing a sort of a triple check right now to make sure that what you're introducing exactly reflects the spreadsheet that you've already been given. I don't want to get to a point where we're looking at the appropriations ordinance amendment and down the line, there's issues on doing some triple checking.
Councilman Larson, if you're done, the Chair would like to recognize Councilman Petrus. If not, just do have a floor. Chair recognizes.
We had a Finance Committee meeting today, and we talked through capital requests for three of the departments. That was a helpful and productive meeting, and we have another meeting tomorrow where we're going to continue to talk through those items. And I just feel like, reiterating what I said earlier, I feel like forcing this onto the agenda is sort of like putting the cart before the horse. We're putting this legislation on the agenda even though we're not going to discuss some of these items until tomorrow. So it just seems we already are planning to vote on it on the third. It seems more appropriate that we have a chance to talk through the items before they're read into the record. So that's just what I shared earlier. Just wanted to reiterate that.
The Chair recognizes Councilman Madox.
Thank you. Just for clarification, that's how we introduce all of our legislation for the most part. There's a reading, and then the Chair or the President of Council then sends it over to committee. But there's at least that reading to have that information. We've never not put it on the agenda after it's gone through committee and had the discussion. That's what initiates that, and then it goes back. So any changes or edits, it would make sense to add them so that they're in there so that we can discuss them in the committee. But it wouldn't make any sense to discuss that if it hasn't been read and then sent back to a committee. It's got to go into that committee in the first place. And so just to give clarification, there's plenty of legislation where we have read it, and then the President of Council sends it over to committee for a full discussion and to see the need of it and that information, which is precisely what we will be doing here with this, editing or amending it with the additional information, which I think will be helpful during the Finance Committee meeting to have that in front of us already when we're discussing that, having already read it in. But that's just what I want to share.
The Chair recognizes the mayor.
That's basically what I was going to mention. Generally, when legislation is introduced, it is in, well, in normal order, sent to committee for discussion, then referred back. In this case, there is, there has been a vehement request from council that I provide the administration's capital expenditures as a portion of this budget. And in acceding to that request, that demand, I've provided the addition of this nine million dollars of capital requests that should be included in the administration's appropriations ordinance for twenty twenty-five. The total request that the administration is providing to council. Council then has the opportunity to amend that legislation in order to reduce, increase, any particular line that it wishes. Standing in the way of making the amendment does very little other than to stop the administration from presenting a complete package to the council. If council wishes to remove this capital from the budget, they, you can. This is a almost perfunctory and procedural process that does not make any permanent changes. It simply amends the legislation that is before council so that council is discussing a complete package in the legislation as opposed to a partial package in the legislation. I say all that to say, council retains all of its authority to make any amendments that it wishes. But again, if council wishes to move away from a path of presenting the administration's complete package or appropriations ordinance, I can withdraw and reintroduce.
One more, and then I'll say something, and then we'll move on to the next one so we have a full agenda. I'm sorry. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Larson.
I'm willing to move this forward with the understanding that we have not seen that substitution of Exhibit One that we're supposed to. Is that how I say it? If I was going to do this and we amended the agenda to allow for zero one one to be read for a second time, then when we get to that legislation, we ask, or I say, I'd like to amend by substitution Exhibit One as provided by the mayor on February eighteenth.
Is it one or A?
It's one.
So yes.
Because I, we need to move forward with this. We can't, we've got to make sure we've got all the information out to the public that needs to be out there. This is what the mayor has wanted to make sure people have in their information list and what council has. So we will have that Exhibit One by the meeting or by tomorrow, Mayor Serran?
By the meeting.
So I would like to, I'd be okay with amending the agenda?
Well, I'm just going to say I don't have the legislation here for ordinance eleven that you all are discussing, and I don't have the amended version as well. So I don't know if any of the council members here have the ordinance eleven before them or on their computers. Do you all have it? Hello? Yes, no? Councilman Pash, do you have it?
Yeah, I have all that, but this is, this should have happened way before this meeting, before we were in here.
So, yeah, I think when you're talking about money and budgets, my thing is, I kind of agree with Councilman Petrus. It feels like we're moving the cart before the horse when it seems like we should have that information. I know there's a lot of information that's still not have been done, but I'm not going to prolong the discussion. What I'm going to do is refer the legislation to the Budget Committee, and when we go to council meetings, you all can vote on adding it to the agenda. Okay? All right, so let's move forward with the agenda. The next agenda was, item is the budget. Councilman Larson.
Before I list the open items from the list that council has requested pertaining to the twenty twenty-five budget, here's the part of the city's charter, Article Nine, Section One, that gives council authorization to request funding information from the administration. Quote, "On before the fifteenth day of November of each year, the mayor shall submit to council an estimate of expenditures and revenues to city departments on uniform blanks to be furnished by the mayor and approved by council. Director Finance shall assist the mayor in preparation with such information. Such information shall be furnished in detail for each department and in such form as the city council made from time to time require, and shall contain the recommendations of the mayor as seem most comfortably appropriate with the reasons therefore and such detail as the council will require," unquote. That being said, here's a list of open items councils requested that we do not have. Twenty twenty-five budget book revised to reflect the changes that we've just been talking about by department. Actual end of year fund balances for twenty twenty-four. Director Hairston has estimated completion date of February twenty-fourth. Finance Committee will be meeting this week, that week, next week to discuss the year-end fund balances as received from Director Hairston, and hopefully return the appropriations legislation back to council for final reading on March third. October, November, December financial statements. Director Hairston has also estimated council will have this information February twenty-fourth. Also, we discuss the finance committee. I mean, or revise, I have to say that if we can just simply get the year-end fund balance, the fourth quarter report, that would be quite satisfactory. We just need those actual ending balances. Capital budget. We received an amended capital budget from the mayor of February sixth. The Finance Committee will be holding meetings. We know that. Twenty-four capital project carryover, we talked about that in our committee meeting today. Unfilled positions in twenty twenty-four savings and unbudgeted twenty twenty-five expenses we discussed this week. Narrative explanations for December thirtieth revisions of the twenty twenty-five appropriations from the mayor, any additional journal items which were posted to year-end twenty twenty-four, to zero out or any negative balances. We have one sample. We have an example of one of those transactions, but there were several more. And the Kane Park final actual balance for twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Councilwoman Larson. Next, on the, any questions, discussions regarding that item? Seeing none, moving forward to the CRC recommendations and review timelines. Council to complete the CRC recommendations by March. Everybody good with that? As the council finalizes each bucket, the Law Department begins to review the council's recommendations. Law Director, good with that?
I mean, so I thought that we were sort of working our way through, and then it was going to be handed over to law for sort of commencing that second level of review.
Okay.
Is that slight caveat, yes?
Okay, thank you. The Law Department will prepare legislation, and council will review it by June. Timeline?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. The council will have at least two readings on the recommended legislation in August. So a good timeline?
That part will be up to council.
Council?
If you have legislation by June, you should be in a position to decide what you're going to do.
Okay, that's a good one. The valid legislation language is submitted to the Board of Elections by the first week of September. All right, just good. Oh, we're hitting a home run right now. Okay. Bucket one and bucket three has been completed. Bucket two, four, and five needs to be reviewed. Any additional meetings, Addie will be doing a poll for March. Everyone's good with that? Okay, the next CRC meeting is scheduled for Saturday, February twenty-second, ten to three. And if you have not put in your lunch order, please do so with Addie before you leave today. Everyone's good with that? Great. Council President, Vice President's Community Meeting will take place on Wednesday, February twenty-sixth, from six p.m. at the Community Center. I'd like to thank the mayor for adding it in the e-news with both photos of Council President and Council Vice President, so thank you. Review Economic Development MOU. President Kuda.
Yeah, I think we're all settled on this. The two things we're going to add are the, just some entry that recognizes that if a developer decides to have any kind of community meetings, that council could be attending, that that would be, that we would be notified. And also, any timeline information, like for instance, a deadline that the developer may have or so forth, that that would be communicated to council as early as possible. As soon as I get back, I'll write that up and work with Director Zamp to modify our MOU and bring it up to date.
Thank you, President Kuda. I will refer that to the Planning and Development Committee, which we have one scheduled for February twenty-sixth. Is that good with you? Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the Opera Exterior Repair Program. President Kuda.
Yeah, nothing to really add here, I met with Director Zamp and Assistant Director Iorio, and we talked through the exterior repair program just to make sure that we were on the same page and satisfied with the conversation we had. So nothing more to really add at this time.
Okay, I will refer this to the Housing Committee. Is that okay with you, Councilman Petrus? Thank you. Okay, next, we will have executive session with the Planning and Development Executive Director, with the Director, Director Zamp. So if everyone in the room could excuse us, we'll go into executive session. I'm getting there. And I'm going to turn it over to Councilman Cobb to read the motion.
Yes. Madam President, I would like to make a motion that we go into executive session to consider the lease or sale of city-owned real property and to consider confidential information related to the marketing plans, specific business strategies, production techniques, trade secrets, or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance or for negotiations in other political subdivisions respecting requests for economic development assistance as necessary to protect the interests of the applicant with possible investment or expenditure of public funds. to be made in connection with the economic development project.
Thank you. Roll call?
We need a second.
A second, I'm sorry.
Second.
I see a second. Councilwoman Larson, discussion, questions? Roll call?
Cobb.
Aye.
Petrus.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Maddox.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Pash.
Yes.
Okay, so we are now out of executive session, and the next item on the agenda is other. Since we are seven forty, if all council members have anything for other, if you could put it under new business, under the council meeting, I would appreciate it. All right, well, this meeting is now adjourned.